I call to order the Wickliffe City Council meeting on May 20th, 2019. Sandy, please go over roles.
Jan Lilla.
Here.
Boko.
Present.
Dorsey.
Here.
Kaski.
Here.
Levon.
Here.
Sackes.
Excuse.
Solot. Here.
Mayor, I think we've sworn in some firefighters?
Yes, yes, we do. Three new part-time firefighters. So first off, Mr. Nathan Galitz, please. All right. So you guys want to turn around this way and get you on the picture. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Nathan Galitz.
I, Nathan Galitz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Wickliffe.
And the laws and the Charter of the City of Wickliffe.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As a part-time firefighter of the City of Wickliffe.
As a part-time firefighter of the City of Wickliffe.
Fire Department during my continuance and set office.
Fire Department, my continuance and set office.
Congratulations. All right, we'll board it together. Mr. Dominic Manastra, please. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Dominic Manastra.
I, Dominic Manastra.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Wickliffe.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Wickliffe.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As a part-time firefighter.
As a part-time firefighter.
Of the City of Wickliffe Fire Department.
Of the City of Wickliffe Fire Department.
During my continuance and set office.
During my continuance and set office.
Congratulations. I'll just sign both of these. Look at paycheck, I'm signing this one. Yeah, just goes to welcome you. Ryan Zakowski.
Do you mind if I'm here next?
Put the Bible there. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Ryan Zakowski.
I, Ryan Zakowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Wickliffe.
And the laws and the Charter of the City of Wickliffe.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As a part-time firefighter.
As a part-time firefighter.
Of the City of Wickliffe Fire Department.
Of the City of Wickliffe Fire Department.
During my continuance and set office.
During my continuance and set office.
Congratulations. All right, that's a good start for the congratulations. And this is young men, a long-served career with the City of Wickliffe. Thank you.
Chief Powers. You know, it seems like we're hiring guys in swearing ban almost weekly now. That's a good thing because we have so many leaving. But we're very fortunate, once again, to get three outstanding part-time firefighters. I hope they stay with me, but I wish they'd go on to full-time careers like they want to someday, too. So we're very fortunate. We've done a lot of recruiting on these three, and we've got three really outstanding young gentlemen that are going to provide us great services in this community for a couple more years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Communications from the Mayor's City Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not a lot, as we just met last week. A provider, Eva, at the board reading is tomorrow, 8:30 a.m. at Trevi Catering, New York Model, I.A. Hall. And again, just a reminder for council, as you're voting on potential issues that can go on ballot this November, specifically in regards to referendum zoning, you all know I'm a fan of this, a proponent of this, just to reiterate, the entire Charter Review Commission does recommend this proposed change, one of which is the current Economic Development Manager for Willoughby, formerly of Mentor, the Mayor of Willoughby, the Mayor of Kirkland, recommend these changes for their cities as well. A lot of the Chamber of Commerce, Public Policy Committee, the Board of Directors, and our own Economic Development Managers supports this. Just a reminder to keep that in mind, I think the voters should be able to decide this in the fall. I think we should give them a bit of a doubt to do so. And as a...
Any questions for Council Mayor, City Director?
Thank you, Mayor. Communications from the Director, locked. Thank you, Mr. Council President. In regards to those charter referendum third readings tonight, did moderate my council once again, they are a third reading. Just want to make clear, according to Chapter 13 of our charter, those are two-thirds of the council will those to pass, so at least there is a council elect to vote for them to pass those for those to put on the ballot. And nothing further.
Any questions for Council Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Communications from the Council President. We received a liquor license permit for Casa de Vino Winery and Restaurant at 2893 U.S.A. Avenue, Central Ohio, 4092. I will give it to the board councilman, and if he has any objections, he can notify the Council Board. That is all I have.
Amendments, additions to the agenda? Seeing that, we'll move on to the administrators. Please, Chief Ice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything to add to what's been reported.
Any questions for Council Chief? Councilman DeLue.
Thank you, Council President. Chief Ice, I would like to thank you and the whole entire department for your work with helping me with the issue of someone that taken my bike for me. And the guys at the police department ended up making it right, and I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's not often that you want to have a run-in like that, but you guys came through with trying to cover it and get it achieved. Thank you very much, and your whole department.
Thank you, and no crime is too small.
Any further questions for Councilmen, Police Chief?
Thank you, Chief Ice.
Very cheap powers.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just maybe to reiterate or to discuss, the life expectancy of a part-time firefighter right now is about 22 to 26 months for us. That's why my comment was, we hope we need a couple of good years from you, because, you know, these guys are really good, outstanding guys. They're going to go somewhere else. But if we can get two years out of them, then we're more than that much better. We do not hire people with lesser value firefighters. We only hire the best, and they go through a pretty rigorous background check. And since you guys have been in position, we've hired seven part-time firefighters, but we've lost eight. We hired six career firefighters, but those are all replacements. We're still down about five part-time firefighters and then one full-time firefighter. So we continue to recruit, but it takes a lot of time and effort to get these guys. That's all I have, Council.
Any questions for Councilmen? Very cheap powers.
So I know that I'm new to council, and I'm trying to understand the whole algorithm, really, with how you hire firefighters, but I'm just curious. I know it takes a lot to recruit these guys, and I know you're trying to recruit the very best guys out there, and I know it's a long process. So I'm wondering, why do we maybe not hire more full-time guys that would stick with the department longer, you know, maybe replace, maybe combine some part-time people for a full-time position? Am I...
Well, we do have guys, I think you mean full-time guys that want to work part-time for us, just not hire full-time guys.
No, why don't we hire full-time guys?
Well, I'd love to.
That's great.
I'd love to, but it's about $114,000 per guy.
Right, you've got seven guys. So I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, just broadly, you've got seven guys that are part-time or more than that, so, and I know we don't pay benefits, but you still have to go through the whole recruitment process, you have to train them all, you know, and you lose them regularly, so is, does it make sense for us?
And you're right on. Your thinking is absolutely correct on that, because it does cost a lot to train them, it costs a lot to recruit them, it costs a lot to do background checks and everything on these. The City of Eastlake, who several years ago was having a rough time, they don't have part-time firefighters, they have all full-time people because of that problem.
Right, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of leaving, because you're right, these guys want a career, so they want a full-time position, so the good guys are going to leave for the first good full-time.
And we lose a lot of good guys. These three guys, and much like the two recent hires we had in March, they were our part-time people, they were on a job every day. We want them, but we've lost so many good quality guys to other departments.
Right.
And it's something to look at, but, you know, it comes with the dollar value, and...
Right, but there's the penny wise pound question.
Right, exactly.
So maybe we should look at that a little more closely.
That would be great to look at.
Just, just...
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other additional questions for Councilmen, Fire Chief?
Chief Powers, how long does it take to technically train one of these part-time firefighters? Thirty-six months.
They go through an orientation process that takes about 120 hours to get through that. They can't do it any more than a maximum of eight hours per session, so that takes a while. And then, while they're orientated to us, we have to watch how we staff them. We can't have two newer ones together, because they're the sixth person on a ship, so they're responsible for getting their furniture and their weight out of the field. You can't control the level or magnitude of the call that the chief get. So, and realistically, we're looking about eight or nine months till we really feel comfortable with them. We just can't afford to keep them in orientation for that long. They're all state certified, but just because they're state certified, two of these guys have never been in a fire station before, so it takes a while. You know, we're driving 300, $600,000, $600,000 fire trucks, and we just don't let people climb up to, and if we hit somebody, we probably will kill them in a fire truck. So we've got to make sure of a lot of things before we can just let them use. So, and the work we do is team orientated, usually teams of three, and they, they work within that team. You need somebody to carry things and come, but every now and then, you need a guy who really pulls away, make sure they give the right drug at the right time to the right person. It takes a while. If you, in the end, your report, I think it showed of the 17 guys I brought through in 2017 on the part-time list, eight of them had less than a year or less than experience. And I believe a full-time guy really doesn't get really good at his job until he's been doing it full-time for three years. It takes a lot of experiences to see things, to understand things, and everything we do, we don't get a do-over. You know, we have to do it right the first time. I know I'm getting on my soapbox here, but it's pretty important that we do, and we stress to these young gentlemen that we have to do it right the first time.
Any further questions for Councilmen, Fire Chief? Chief Powers. I ask for your goals.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I have to let you all know since the last time we met was about a month ago, I think I told you that I filed for exemptions for property taxes for four parcels that were vacant parcels by Brock Beller and Silver Street, around in that area. We did receive the refund for the past three years last week, and it was $37,158, so that's all I have to report today.
Any questions for Councilmen, Fire Chief? Thank you, Ms. Olson. Engineer Vermeke.
Thank you, Council President. One thing, asking my written report, applications for community development block grant funding was due, were due today. So we submitted two applications, Mr. Sack submitted one, I submitted another, and you'll be voting on some resolution later on this evening, basically authorizing the mayor to submit those applications. They're okay with us getting it a couple of days late, but we talked to them, but that's, those resolutions later on in the meeting are in regard to that.
Any questions for Councilmen, City Engineer? Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Service Director, DeMiroza.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. The Maple Street project resumed again today. They're doing the base repairs on the west side of the street. Residents have been notified, some of them are parking in the streets, some are using Helm Street. They're done with the west side, they're doing the east side. Then also, most of the week, we're going to be prepping for Memorial Day, working on City Hall parade routes, things like that, trying to keep our daily activities going also. And thank you for this hour of work.
Any questions for Councilmen, Service Director? Councilman Dorsky.
Joe, I understand that a lot of the work you guys do in the parks is weather-related. At what point in time will your guys be moving the focus from City Hall to Colby Park here after you guys get done with Memorial Day and start to focus on cleaning up the other parks as well?
We've been picking some of the parks off a little bit. At the time, it was difficult to get in them because it was so wet. So this week, most of it will be up here, and then we'll start hitting the outskirts a little bit more in time.
Any further questions for Councilmen, Service Director? Thank you, Mr. DeMiroza. Lieutenant Commissioner Sack.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. In addition to my own written report, I would like to ask if you could put in appropriate committee, the vacant and proposed property registrations for a fee increase, that'd be Chapter 1171 and Chapter 1175.
Any questions for Councilmen, Building Commissioner? Councilman Dorsky.
So what would that mean?
To increase the fees?
For the vacant properties?
Vacant property and registration property. It's been about eight years or so since we had it, and maybe make these property owners be a little more aggressive about renting their places out and, you know, working with the city more, so I'd like to put that in committee.
Any other questions for Councilmen, Councilman Dorsky?
Great, based on, on that, I guess let me take this stuff back here. For the current fee schedule that we have, how are we following through each year? Are we charging, or are we giving those vacant property owners with the fee, and have any actually max, I think there's a max out, if I'm not mistaken. Have, has anyone hit that?
We have, we have been, you know, following up on that as they come due, and we have two different files for that, and you and I, and Deon keep up on that also. So they have, I haven't had one max out yet, but a few close.
Mayor.
You know, on that point, for quite some time in the past, that ordinance wasn't being enforced yet until, until last year. So there may have been in the past, but not, what I found out last year is it wasn't being enforced, and we started enforcing it. So, not sure the exact timeline, but it's, it's being enforced now.
Thank you for enforcing it, Senator.
Ready to add someone?
Yeah, I just have one other thing I'd like to get off the track a little bit. I'd like to introduce Mike Boswell. He's from the International Code Council. It's the worldwide council that gets all our codes and keeps us safe, and he's also the co-official for Grove City, Ohio. He came to see us tonight. He's, I just like to recognize him. Thank you.
Any other questions for Councilmen, Building Commissioner? Councilman...
I have one more. So it's funny that you're bringing this up, because I was talking with our economic director about this last week, I guess it was last week. So she was telling me that the vacant property owners do max out at a certain dollar amount after a certain number of years. So you're suggesting that we increase the fees so, so that that max out fee, how much is that?
I believe if I take it off the top of my head, it's like $6,500 a year.
So, right, so I can't believe that that wouldn't be something that's noticed by these guys, so...
But a lot of them, too, there's, there's provisions in there, if they have it under contract with real estate person, that the fees are waived.
One year.
For one year, so.
Because I think that, we were just talking about this, this could really make a difference, because we do have so many vacant properties, and I think it would maybe get some of these people to step up or out. Monica said, yeah, okay, interesting.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Councilmen, Building Commissioner? We will add registration and vacant property fees to the Legislative Welfare Committee. Commissioner Director, stop.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Councilman Dorsky had some questions about Greenbridge, how we're doing last meeting, and let us know that we're going to get some numbers for them today. We had a good week this past week, it's been dry, so we've been having some play. I look back over the last four years through May 19th, and this, this May through May 19th is the second best through May 19th that we've had in the last four years, so we actually made a nice little recovery. Up until last week, it was miserable, so this week really helped us out. And then the year end, or year-to-date totals for this year in revenue were real comparable to the last four years, so we're, we're in good shape. No real big divots or no real big additions, so we're, we're in good shape. Just wanted to also add to my report that this Friday, but the following Friday is our first movie in the park. It's going to be Disney's Incredibles 2, so we've got it posted on our Facebook page to encourage people to come on out. Hopefully, it doesn't rain, start crossing your fingers for that. We'll have a DJ we haven't played, although we have a food truck that's going to be there. And we received a notepad grant this year for these community-type events, so the majority of the fees are, expenses are paid through this notepad grant, so it's encouraging to know that. That's all I have for my report.
Any questions for Councilmen, Recreation Director? Thank you, Mr. Stop. Economic Development Director, Drake.
Mr. President, I've been performing all of my work tonight. Other than, I would like to add, make council aware, if you're not aware, that Lake County Planning Department gives to each city 24 hours a year for any type of planning-type projects you might have, if someone in the planning might like to bounce something or looking at, let's say, modifying something, council's looking at modifying, that is, that is available to each city. I learned that, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware, and sometimes you could actually take a project and start it, let's say, in the fall, continue it into a new year, and get 48 hours, so combine the timeframe of free assistance from the, from the county. That is a benefit for each city, so. And if you have any questions, I can answer that.
Any questions for Councilmen? Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, now, before the audience participation, if anyone would like to address with the City Council, please stand, state your name and address for the clerk's record. Each person will have a five-minute maximum amount of time. Would anyone like to address with the City Council? Would anyone like to address with the City Council? Now, mark, audience participation closed. Any committee reports? Commission reports? Seeing no hold or new business, we'll go to ordinances.
Ordinance number 2019-22, ordinance providing for submission to the electorate of the City of Wickliffe, Ohio. Proposal to amend the Charter of said city by amending Article 6, the Civil Service Commission, Section 3, duties, third reading.
Councilwoman Gaffey.
Is this in regards to the civil service position?
No, it's the role.
It's civil service commission.
You're asking what this is specifically?
Yes.
This removes the position of building commissioner and full-time building inspectors from a civil service classified position.
Okay.
And that would be for anybody hired in the future. Second. Moved by Councilman Dorsky, second by Councilman DeLue to adopt ordinance 2019-22 as presented. Discussion? Councilman Zakowski.
I think we need to have someone that's qualified in this, you know, position, such as building department, so I think the civil service ensures that that position is qualified. No? What's he says?
Mayor. Yeah, they, no, they do not, that they handle the, the hiring and firing and reprimand of those, those positions, but they don't do any qualification testing, they don't look at any certifications on an ongoing basis, they have no input whatsoever on the day-to-day operations of people in those positions, unless it comes time to remove the position, reduce the position, or alter the position.
I thought, I thought you said it also had to do with the position itself, no?
No, no. I believe it's, they, it has nothing to do with the hiring of that position either. They do with the hiring.
It's controlled by Civil Service Commission, kind of like the police and the fire departments, all the employment, you know, has to go through civil service process.
Doesn't mean we're not going to have a qualified person in that position. Whoever's making that decision will still do their due diligence for hiring somebody, but it has nothing to do with ongoing qualifications.
Does this strictly civil service commission?
No, no, this, I'm sorry. My director, sorry. So, Councilperson Zakowski, this isn't changing any, this isn't changing the civil service board. This is, they're, under our city, certain positions in this city are classified as civil service positions, meaning they're, they have to go by the rules of the Civil Service Commission as far as firing qualifications, things like that. This isn't affecting our civil service commission. The positions in the city, which are currently covered by civil service, are police, fire, building commissioner, full-time building commissioner, and full-time building inspectors. Those are the four different classifications of employees in our civil service. This charter amendment, it would keep police and fire under the civil, under the rules of the civil service, it would be removing the positions of building commissioner and full-time building inspectors from a civil service position. It doesn't alter the civil service commission.
Okay. Councilman Dorsky.
So I think there's probably a reason why the civil service commission is involved in some of these important appointments. Can you guys explain to me why we would want to remove the building inspector and building commissioner?
This was recommended by the Charter Review Commission.
It was?
Yes.
I, and I'm just remembering the reasons, the reasons... And does anyone have memory of the reasons or reasons?
I, you know, I do have the report from our last meeting, council, but they have been in previous minutes, you know, they went through, they put down exactly why they had all the recommendations. I don't have that on me.
It's just a pretty, they're pretty important positions. I don't know why we would want to.
I know one of the basics is is in most cities, that's not a civil service position. I think that was why they elected to re, or their recommendation was removed. This is typically not a civil service position.
Okay.
Councilman Jaworski?
This will undo a charter change that was brought forth by Mayor Ruffner and council at that point in time, which was not brought upon by any previous Charter Review Commissions. It was an instance where the mayor at that point in time wanted and council at that point in time granted it to the mayor.
And I'd agree with what the law director said after my times attending those couple meetings, reading the minutes. You know, they, it was unanimous decision by the committee. They did a lot of research based on other cities, and a lot of it's a workflow issue. It doesn't demean those positions and say those positions are less important, but it's easier to operate with. And again, it has nothing to do with the police and fire. Those are, we know those are important positions. That's that's not relevant to the conversation. But again, a lot of it was based on other cities, because it just it just changed the classification for building commissioners and building inspectors, not police and fire.
Okay, yeah, I didn't realize that. That was not precedent anywhere else.
Councilman Jaworski?
The other thing is too, is it's gonna alleviate, it's not gonna be a lot of costs, but there are some costs involved with testing for these types of positions. So it's gonna save us, in my mind, a little bit of money for something that no other city around here does.
Any further discussion? Just want to take it along with this ordinance and the next three. This doesn't change anything. It just allows, send it to the ballot, and the voters to make the ultimate final decision on any of these ordinances. Right, these decisions, okay? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? No. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? No.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of the city of Wiclock, Ohio. A proposal to amend the charter of said city by amending Article Three, the council's Section One, composition term qualifications, third reading.
Adoption. Moved by Councilman Bello, second by Councilman Bogom to adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-third point three as presented. Discussion? Councilor McCaskey?
I agree with Mr. Sakis, who is not here this evening, that council, our terms are decided upon by the voters. And I do not think it's necessary to have a, hold it on. If we're not doing our job, will we vote out?
So I agree with Beth, too. I mean, I think if we're doing a good job, voters are smart, and they can make the decision about, you know, how long anybody stays in office. It's important to have continuity, too, at the council level.
I guess my two cents on this ordinance and the other three is that if these handful of residents in the commission believe that the voters should vote on it, then they are, and being residents, I think the residents should vote on this as well. So anytime a Charter Review Commission does put something out that recommends something can be put out to the residents, I will allow for it. I will vote for it, because that's what the commission of residents has chosen to do.
Councilman Jaworski?
I think with the way that the structure currently works, with the way that the charter works, especially with mayor and council all being up at the same time, that the system itself keeps a flow of individuals running through these seats. There are, there have been a number of times in the previous years where there's simply been no one running for seats. And a number of council, the last couple of elections have won simply because there's been no one to run against them. My fear if we start mandating terms on city council is that we may not end up with the best councilmen or councilwoman, excuse me, or that there's simply maybe no one to run for a seat. I don't wanna see that happen.
I agree with all you guys on the other points, but I just, just let you know why I vote that way. I think the residents should decide. I think our residents are smart and they make great decisions, and they, maybe they may, I would think they would vote this down as well, but that's just my opinion on these next, on these four ordinances.
Any further discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
No.
Bogom?
No.
Jaworski?
No.
Kowski? No. Councilor? No, I'm sorry, Levon. It was too close to the other one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-four. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of the city of Wiclock, Ohio. A proposal to amend the charter of said city by amending Article Eleven, Initiative Reprentum and Recall, Section Three, mandatory zoning referendum, third reading.
Adoption. Second. Moved by Councilman Bello, second by Councilman Bogom to adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-four as presented. Discussion? Councilor McCaskey?
As far as we're discussing voting, as, when we're talking about zoning, that's a really big, big thing to have only a few people vote on what's gonna go on in the entire city and only allow a few people to vote. Not all the residents pay attention to what's going on in the city all the time unless it's affecting them directly. If you're gonna have some monstrosity built next to you or in your neighborhood, and you weren't aware that it was up for a vote, and you didn't come to the city hall that night, you're out of luck. So I think that this is a, not such a good idea at the time.
Mayor?
Just want to reiterate again that we need this to stop falling behind other cities in the county. We're probably going to be the only city in the county that still has this if it doesn't get on the ballot and pass. Council McCaskey, make it sound as if it's gonna be a snap decision, and you miss one meeting, you're done for. Well, that's, that's not the case. We've gone through this so many times, we have so many people in favor, that so many people understand we need it to help move our city forward and stop the bad thing we have in the business community that we worked so hard to repair, years of neglect. Like, we almost didn't get the tapestry senior living because of this, because of this referendum zoning. But I was out before I was even in this office, collecting signatures with other folks to make that happen, when nobody, not even people in council, were paying attention. The entire Charter Review Commission unanimously supports this. There are a very well-connected, well-versed, educated group of individuals in this city. And I think they speak for the residents who should decide this. I think you're making this decision with your blinders on, and I don't think you're taking into account what's in the best interest of the city, not just in the short term, but in the long term.
I think we, I think we set the precedent when we, I'd say the precedent, but I think that when we decided that the Planning Commission commandant speak, I think they're a great form or great body to, you know, to make the recommendations that council needs for these decisions. I mean, as we talked, at least one hearing plus three readings, I mean, that's four or five different meetings that they would have to have, not just one. And I, and I trust the Planning Commission to make the right decision, that they're, you know, one, outside of council, probably one of the most important bodies, about most important body in the city. It's great for the residents that that know what they're doing. So I think, I think the, the alternative to referendum zoning, going to the Planning Commission, is a great alternative. And it helps, helps us bring in businesses that people, continuing on social media blast is about not having a business, is on you, but have nothing else. This, if we continue to go with referendum zoning, we can continue that, 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 that way of life. Councilman Bogom?
Yeah, I believe when we did discuss, talking with the law director, there wasn't enough checks and balances. If there is an issue coming forward at us, it's there. And there's a way that the people can act before, during, and after the decision is made, so. I hate to see our city lose out because we drag. That's all I got to say.
Councilman Bello?
If you talk with some of the people in the Charter Review who were against this the first time we voted, it seemed that we made a good due, due process here to streamline the entire zoning referendum down to something from what would normally take, it really was fourteen months, possibly as short as, as three. Or, you know, based on the meeting schedules and stuff like that, it's a good compromise. I originally voted no, because I didn't think that the, that when the Charter Review came to us, they weren't a hundred percent sure on it. But with their cooperation, I believe this is a very, very good compromise in a way that will keep our city moving forward in the right way with businesses.
Councilman Jaworski?
During this whole process, there was some, there was a phrase, and I can't remember if it was the economic development director or someone else who had said, "Our system is either really good because we've had a hundred percent passage, or that there's something wrong." I mean, it's, to me, the way that we have the zoning stuff here in the city, but we have our industrial section situated in one area of town. We have the Town Center District, which is such a wide, so much different type of zoning combined into one there. To me, the, the way that our zoning is currently, offers the city the best function right now. I mean, if someone's gonna come in and want a, a major zoning change, I think it needs to be looked at significantly by the residents. And I have a concern taking power away from the residents, because it is a referendum vote right now. And then secondly, notifications of the residents. I do feel that there are a lot of people who don't pay attention and won't know until it's too late. We have the tobacco twenty-one issue, for instance, they try to get petitions. It's not easy to do. And if there's a group of people that, that are against it, I don't feel that it's ever gonna be challenged, because it's almost impossible to get enough signatures in that short amount of time and, 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 and put a stop to something.
Any further discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
No.
Kowski? No. Levon?
Yes.
Sandy? Uh, Solot? No.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of the city of Wiclock, Ohio. Proposal to amend the charter of said city by amending Article Eight, Finances, Section Seven, Purposes, Contracts, Public Committee, third reading.
Adoption. Moved by Councilman Bello, second by Councilor McCaskey to adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five as presented. Discussion? This is the change of verbiage when we vote for, uh, we're going to put out bids for contractors. I think Councilman Bello brought up that one time about making sure we have, you know, the correct bidding process going on, make sure we have the right, you know, people bidding out. Change it to lowest investor on that contract. Any further discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six. An ordinance providing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Wiclock, Ohio for the period beginning January first, two thousand nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, third reading.
Adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilor McCaskey, second by Councilman Bello to adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six as presented. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight. An ordinance amending Chapter seven thirty-three Garage Sales of the codified ordinances of the city of Wiclock, Ohio, second reading. Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine. An ordinance amending Chapter thirteen twenty-seven point oh-one Temporary Uses of the Codified Ordances of the city of Wiclock, Ohio, second reading. Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-two amended. An ordinance providing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Wiclock, Ohio for the period beginning January first, two thousand nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, as this is going to amend in the ultimate first reading. Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of one new current model year Ford F three fifty cab Chases with requested equipment produced by the Service Department of the city of Wiclock, Ohio through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second. Moved by Councilor McCaskey, second by Councilman Bello to suspend those accounts in place. Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three, on the third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Second. Moved by Councilor McCaskey, second by Councilman Bello to adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three as presented. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash oh-seven. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Wiclock, Ohio, to submit an application to the Lake County Office of Planning and Community Development for funding through the Competitive Community Development Black Grant Program declaring an emergency.
Suspension?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bello, second by Councilor McCaskey, suspend those accounts in place. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven, on the third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilor McCaskey, second by Councilman Bogom to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven as presented. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash eight. A resolution authorizing and directing the building commissioner of the city of Wiclock, Ohio to apply for and accept financial assistance for the Lake County Fiscal Year nineteen Community Development Black Grant Program to improve the housing stock in the city of Wiclock, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bello, second by Councilman Solot to suspend those accounts on the first Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eight, on the third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bogom, second by Councilor McCaskey to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eight as presented. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.
Other legislation? Disputing this, Councilman Jaworski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Council President. I'd like to schedule a improvement committee meeting. I'll leave it up to members of the committee if they would like to meet next Tuesday following all the other meetings, or if you would like to meet the following Monday, June third, to just discuss the transport and holding party. Anybody have any preference, or if you can't make one of those days?
We are meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
All right, then, people that work for you, to be fun, and following conclusion to the other meetings.
On May twenty-eighth. So I, I want to remind everybody, those finance and legislation one of our meetings are on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at seven P M, as well as improvement meeting now. Any other? Disputing this? Germany? Second. Moved by Councilor McCaskey, second by Councilman Bello to adjourn. Discussion? Sandy, who's called her role?
Janne Lill?
Yes.
Bogom?
Yes.
Jaworski? Kowski? Yes. Levon?
Yes.
Solot? Yes.